Okay, folks. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of August 15th. If you'd all rise please so we can salute the flag.
Really?
Mr. Freetham?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all please stay standing for a moment of silence for a thirty-member SEAL team that was killed in Afghanistan and the rest of our soldiers protecting us here and abroad. Thank you. Please be seated. All right. So, have to bear with me for one second. I need to log in here to see what we're doing. Unfortunately, I don't have a hard copy. All right. Time report, eight fifteen. Well, look at that. He must feel complete. Come on, let's go.
We're all trying to access it at the same time.
Okay. All right. So, Boats Committee's Commission Updates. David Priest, we've been waiting for you, sir.
Yes, well, thank you. It's good to be waiting.
Step right up.
I have a letter to present to you. And I'll give this to David.
Thanks. Hi, Sharon.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for joining us.
Sure.
There you go. So, thank you very much for allowing me and Sharon Carson to come tonight and to talk to you about the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. This year, we are celebrating our forty-fifth anniversary of being a regional planning commission. We started out with a nuclear corps of communities that consisted of Manchester, Auburn, Bedford, Goffstown, Hooksett, and also the town of Londonderry. And since then, we have grown to thirteen communities, and we are the largest regional planning commission and metropolitan planning organization in New Hampshire. We represent over a quarter percent of the state's population and jobs within our region. The planning commission was formed to accomplish several factors. One was to increase communication. Two, to promote intergovernmental coordination and cooperation among the planning boards and local officials, to promote coordinated development of the region, and to prepare the regional plan. And since then, we have done just that. In seventy-three, we were also designated as the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region, which meant we had the responsibility of doing all the transportation planning and programming for the thirteen municipalities. The letter that was passed out today kind of identifies the list of services that we provide to each of our municipalities, and there's also attachment of the projects, programs that we did for the town of Londonderry last year. Our number-one priority is to provide services to our local communities. And it's a challenge this year because funding at the state as well as federal has been cut back. Two years ago, we were having about eighty thousand coming from a couple of the state departments. We are down to eleven thousand this year. But that has not hampered us. We are going out looking for non-traditional sources of funding, applying for grants and programs, because we continue to see the need of providing planning and assistance to our communities, and that's our number-one priority. So, Sharon, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Thank you, David. Well, David asked me to come to speak with you this evening because I've been one of Londonderry's representatives to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission for, I would say, I have to say, close to ten years now.
Right.
So, I'm very, very familiar with the organization and the type of work that they do on our behalf. I have also served on Londonderry's Hazardous Mitigation Committee, which prepares plans that are required by the federal government, and we just recently went through another plan last year. The services that they provide for us, I believe, are extremely beneficial. They can deliver a product for us at a reduced cost. If the town had to do it, it would, again, cost us a lot more money. And they have an extremely professional staff, and, as I said, they're very aware of what's going on in Concord. In the paper that handed, that was handed out to you, you can see that they do outreach to the legislators in Concord for the region to educate them about planning issues, what's going on in their communities, but to also serve as a resource if they need information about something that has to do with planning, whether it's transportation, it's housing, it's business development. They're there, and they will get you that information. So, I'm just here to provide some sort of testimonial to the type of work that gets done and to just really emphasize how beneficial it is for us.
And in this upcoming year, we are hoping to work with your planning department and other department heads in developing an energy chapter for your master plan that will identify the sources of energy and come up with a conservation plan that will help you to reduce energy and to gain the energy savings.
Cool. Counsel, any questions for David?
Actually, I have a question concerning, as you know, the town's going to soon be getting an application for the Woodmont development.
Correct.
Have you taken any interest in that or done any preliminary studies?
We are very familiar with the project. One of our responsibilities is to prepare a critical review of a development of a regional impact. So, we see that the Woodmont Commons would qualify under that. So, we will provide the planning board a very detailed critique on the Woodmont Commons at that time. So, that would be environmental, traffic, land use.
That, one of the things I was interested in was the traffic impact.
Yes.
Okay. On the entire region, including ninety-three and...
Correct, yes, correct.
So, would this study be similar to the one you did for Patton-Gill Road, which was number twelve, when you remember?
No, this, the study for development of regional impact will look at all of the features of this development, and will make our findings to the planning board for their consideration. It's like a mini environmental impact statement. We're looking at whether, what the impacts are going to be for the adjacent communities and infrastructure.
Great. Joan, did you have anything for David?
No. So, please stand.
Okay. David, I do, it's funny because back when I was on the Budget Committee, I actually started reading a lot of the stuff that you guys were sending out and getting to know what you do and getting a feel, and it is a valuable service. There is a lot of good things that you guys do, and it's nice to know that, you know, you're incorporating everyone and kind of, you know, putting your arm around it and saying, "Okay, this, we're providing the service, and, you know, we can do this, that." And then, you know, in the end, you can save a lot of money doing that by, you know, teaming up. So, I think that's a great, it's a great process that you guys are doing and a good service. So, I'd just like to say thank you. Keep up the good work, and I appreciate you coming in tonight and taking the time to talk to us.
Okay. If I could ask a question. One of the services you indicated you do here is you do traffic counts of locations requested by local authorities.
Correct, correct.
Do you make that information available to...
Yes, it's on our website.
Oh, it's on your website?
That's correct.
Mr. Guerin.
Just to add to that, when you do something within the town, obviously, we're notified of that, right?
Correct. You're always notified.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, just want to make note, hey, Dave? That Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission does, provides that service each and every year. We have all the traffics, traffic studies that they have done, or traffic counts they have done since I've started working here, since nineteen ninety-nine. I have them all in my office available to anybody who would ever want to, want to see them. Although, the, based on the DOT location of, of the counters, they like to have, they like to vary some of the counters. Some stay the same, such as at the town lines and various, the various budding communities, but others will change, you know, change location. But every other year, I think, I think it's every other year or every three years, it comes back to that location, so you have something to compare and contrast to.
Sorry. In regards to updating them, specifically with Woodmont, is that something that we're looking to do as a priority or ask you to do as a service for us?
If you would like those intersections around Woodmont to be studied, all you have to do is just request it, and we'll put it on our list of things to do.
It would be, yeah. And the only thing I would just ask is that, you know, they're going to be preparing a study. If there's something additional to, you know, additional to that study that will supplement that, that, you know, the board finds or the planning board finds that some additional information is warranted, then maybe we can ask them at that point, so we won't duplicate efforts, that's all.
The transportation piece was...
Yeah, I don't want to supplant the planning board. That's, that's their job, and I'm sure they'll catch that, so.
It's not someone supplanting it, it's just that, is this that we've asked them for a study, and we provided areas that we want to see studied, but if there's other supplemental information that the board might want, either the Town Council or the planning board, I would just say, once we identify what we have in place, then we can decide what additional information we want to see.
Okay. Would, would an applicant, a developer, would they use your, your commission's traffic council, would they do their own? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, if a developer wants to do something, you know, you may be, I'd feel more confident if I was using an independent reference of a count versus an applicant's reference. Is that what's commonly done in most cases?
Sometimes they'll provide their own, I mean, they'll put their own counters out there, but if we have readily available, readily available information, they will use it.
On main light, main areas where they normally, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because if they don't have to duplicate efforts, they, they won't, you know, they'll, they'll use whatever's on file.
I think what's good about it is it provides us with a baseline where it already exists and everything, and what we're looking for from the developers is what's the incremental increase in peak and non-peak traffic hours so that we can make those identifications of what improvements will actually be needed to handle what's above and beyond what we already have. I think they've got all the information that we, that's what's current. I don't think, you guys don't do future traffic studies based on what's being built.
No, we do, we have a traffic model that we can project, given the current traffic counts at intersections and populations.
Okay.
But we don't go beyond that.
So, if we got a report from, take on Tom's comment here, if we got a report from a developer and we thought that that report was deficient, we could give that to you and you could put it in your model and tell us whether that's true or not?
That's correct. We could.
That could be interesting, yeah.
We also provide the service of being, to, to review any traffic studies that you get from developers to make sure that they are sound and they are telling you the entire picture. So, we do this for the town, the city of Manchester, and this is a service that we, we provide to all of our municipalities.
Yeah, that could be interesting. If we ever need it.
Okay. All right. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to say more?
There's one thing, actually, as a testimonial to Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, is that I've been a planner in this region for over twenty years and within the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission region. And I got to say, over the last, I think you've been here eight years now.
Correct.
And over the last eight years, it's been night and day as far, as far as the information, the documentation, the studies that have been done through Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, it's been astronomical. So, I would say, keep up the good work.
Cool. Thank you, Andre.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see. We have a couple of things we need to do. Maria Newman, would you like to step forward?
Sure.
Thank you. I was waiting to see if Nicole came with you.
Busy. I don't know if you want this, it's just a simple resume.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think we did get a copy of it. Okay, so you are here.
Well, this is low.
You can raise it up. Did you get you here tonight because you want to come to us to be an alternate on the planning board?
Yeah, for sure.
Great. So, why don't you tell us a little about yourself?
Okay, well, I've been living here, my family and I have been living here for fourteen years, and we love Londonderry. We plan on being here for quite a while longer. So, my kids are, as you know, I have a daughter who's twenty, so junior year of college, and I have a son going into his junior year of high school. So, they're older now and on their own and can fend for themselves more, so I'm back to volunteering. I did, as you can tell from my resume, I volunteered for many years with the school district, and that was my passion for a long time. And then I took a little bit of a break. I had some health issues in the family, with my parents and so forth and so on, so concentrated on that. And at this point, I'm ready to volunteer for the town. I participated in Leadership Londonderry and thought that was a great program. And I actually wanted to get involved with the planning board right after that, but at the time, the middle school was in desperate need of a PTO president, so I felt like my energies should go there at the time. So, so now I'm here. I see that there's an opening, and I told Margot I was interested.
Cool.
That's where I'm at.
Excellent. All right. Counsel, any questions for Maria?
How do you think you can best effect change going forward to the council? What can you add to, to the committee that you're applying to?
Well, being here fourteen years helps because I have seen the growth. I have seen a lot of positive changes. I see what's coming down the pike, which I think there's a lot of growth happening in town, which I am, I am happy to see some growth coming to the town. I do feel that there's room for it. I also am respectful of the town's, you know, heritage and open space and all that as well. So, I do feel like I could listen, learn, and be a part of the discussions, being, I've been here fourteen years, and I think I could be, you know, being just a, being a mom and, you know, working in the community, I think I could give some good input.
So, kind of an open-ended question, last question would be, what do you think of Woodmont?
I think, I think we, I think last year, we, well, why didn't you respond?
Yeah. Do you ask because I haven't presented it yet?
You can't prejudge.
I can't prejudge it.
I'm just talking about... Well, all I could, the entire, the news media, I mean, you're looking to get on the planning board, the news has been reporting a lot of things about Woodmont. I'm sure you've driven past it.
Oh, sure.
You know, and so...
Yes, I've been following it. I have.
So, general, a general opinion about it?
I, generally, I am, I am for it, but I am not, I have no preconceived notions of it coming onto the planning board. I would be listening and judging as from what I hear, like everybody else, I would assume. And I am, I am for the growth in the town. I think that, you know, that there's room for it. But again, I know that it has to be very carefully decided upon. So, I guess that's my, my best answer. But I have been following it. I have, I've attended some of the, I've been at one of the workshops and I've been following, of course, yeah, and I've been following the news and staying on top of it, so.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Joe, Tom?
No, I have no question. Thank you for volunteering.
Mr. Farrell?
So, Marie, you grew up in Long Island?
I did.
All right. So, did you move directly from New York to here?
No, I was actually in the Chicago area for a short amount of time, a couple of years.
Okay. So, then you've seen enough to know what we don't want to see then.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the area that I, that I was in for a short amount of time is like way overdeveloped at this point, so, yeah. And Long Island's way overdeveloped. So, I know what can happen, which, again, why I do have a respect for the certain amount of open space. I do think there's a balance, you know, that's, that's important.
Okay. Next question's probably the most important question I'm going to ask you.
Not going to ask me what kind of fan I am at baseball.
Yankees or Mets?
I know the answer to that one.
Ask me Yankees or Mets.
Actually, actually, I could ask you Yankees or Mets, but judging from where you grew up in Long Island, I would guess Mets.
You know what? My family Mets fans, but I'm, but I'm a Yankees fan.
All right. Well, I'm from, I'm from that, I'm not from Long Island, I'm from Bergen County, so...
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so, you know, you look good to me.
You know, if anything, I'll shake it up a bit, right?
I like that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, Maria, I've known you a while. I really don't have any questions for you. I do appreciate the fact that you're stepping forward.
Yeah.
As, as I've told everybody, you know, that I know, you know, it's, it's easy to sit there and throw stones from the couch, but, you know, if you want to participate and you want to have an opinion, this is the place to do it.
Right.
It really is.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's not all bad.
Well, like I said...
It has its rough spots, but it's not all bad.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'm willing to learn. There's a lot of learning to do, I'm sure. I know there's a lot of state rules and all that, and I'm willing to listen.
The best, the best place to be as, as an alternate, you'll be able to sit there and learn a lot as they go.
Well, that's what I like about that.
Ask a lot of questions, you'll learn a lot.
Yep.
There's no such thing as a bad question.
Right, and that's what I like about that.
Never be afraid to ask it.
Yep, nope, I won't, I won't.
That's, that's a rule of thumb.
Yep.
All right. So, Dave, can we take this out of order and get it done now so she doesn't have to...
Just so you know, we have another community resident who's interested in the position. They couldn't make it tonight, so they're scheduled for September twelfth. So, you can interview that person, you can appoint where you can do anything you want, but just to let you know, there is another community member who has expressed interest.
I'm okay with moving forward tonight, and we can put that to the next...
It's the council's call.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move, let's move forward, yeah.
You all set with that, Joan? Moving forward tonight? Okay. All those in favor of Maria becoming an alternate on the planning board, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, chair votes affirmative, four zero, more than passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was simple. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Simplest thing you're going to see over the future.
That's for sure.
Just remember, you signed up.
That's right.
Kathy, I believe you're next. Do you have our Old Home Day?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like what?
Thank you.
Yeah, I had to add that.
Yes, I'm here for Old Home Day. It is starting Wednesday, if you aren't aware. Wednesday nights, I mean, I, do you want me to go through the schedule? What do you want me to do?
Just touch on it.
Because I didn't, I'm not in here for Chairman Acquisition Night where I'm supposed to give you a report, right? So, it's just...
No, this is just Old Home Day, and here's what we got.
Okay. All right. So, Old Home Day starts, it's our hundred and twelfth. We are distinguished in the state because we follow it consecutively. That's our claim to fame. We've always held it on the third Thursday, third Saturday of August, and we will always hold it on the third Saturday of August. So, if people have a question about what the date is next year, just look down to the third Saturday in August. So, that's when it will always be held. On Wednesday night is senior night. We have a barbecue where we usually get about two hundred seniors, and then they go over to the Common for a swing band. On Thursday night is our tenth, or up to our ninth or tenth, tenth annual kids' night. That's appropriate for ages about eight to, five to ten, five to ten about. The bounce houses, fun things, face painting, costume characters, groups on the stage like Mad Science, Judy Pancoast, you know, we're going to have a Fisher Cat raffle for four box seats. Trying to think what else. But it's a good night for kids. We've changed the time on that. It's now five-thirty to eight o'clock because we've entered a new event that we were able to fund as the frugal Old Home Day Committee. Another new event, which is called Movie Night, because we wanted to fit the kids from the middle school, try to come up with something for the middle school aged children. So, we have now done a Movie Mania Night, and that's going to start at nine o'clock on the Common that same evening, Thursday, and the movie is Grown Ups with Adam Sandler. And then Friday night is the police fire softball game. I think that's at six-thirty. I don't have glasses, no, six o'clock. That's at the Matthew Thornton Field. That's always a good time where the firefighters and the police do a softball game. You can come out and cheer them on. After that, we're going to have the concert, which starts at seven-fifteen. It's sold out again, and that goes till eight-forty-five when the fireworks go off.
And that's in front of the high school, right?
Right.
Yep.
In front of the high school. On Saturday, the events are the hot air balloon rides again that RE/MAX does. All the funds they collect goes to Dollar for Scholars. The Londonderry Five K Road Race, which is at eight o'clock. You can contact Larry Martin, all that information's on the website, oldhomeday.com or Old Home Days, because people get that confused. So, both of them go to the same location. The Presbyterian Church or Orchard Christian Fellowship branch of the Presbyterian Church is going to do a contemporary breakfast in the morning. So, they have good food over there, and most of that goes to donations, and so we ask that, you know, people participate and go over there. You can get a free, get some good food, coffee, that kind of stuff. So, you always need it that early in the morning. The baby contest is at nine, and that's from nine to ten, and unfortunately, if you didn't pre-register, you can't get in. So, that is requiring pre-registration. That starts at nine. That is at the high school cafeteria. We also are having a fair this year. That's a new event. That's going to be held at the Grange. People can bring their items in, and then the judging goes from ten to twelve, and then from twelve o'clock on till three o'clock PM. It's open to the general public to come in and see what has been put into the contest. The parade starts at ten-thirty. It starts at the middle school. We ask nobody park there, nobody, there's no parking at all for anyone, so please be prepared with your child's marching in the parade, that you can drop them off there and meet them at the end of the parade route, which is at Max Apples. Again, the Manchester Airport has graciously offered us the shuttle for that day, so people can park at Max Apples and pick up the shuttle. The shuttle will run continuously from eight till ten-fifteen until we close the road for the parade. The road is also closed for the road race at eight AM, so people need to be aware that Mammoth Road is pretty unpassable until about noon time. There are openings to try to alleviate the traffic, but Mammoth Road is closed. Thanks to the guys at the garage, they have some detour signs that they put up for me for every year. So, just be aware that Mammoth Road is on and off closed from about eight AM till eleven-thirty. On the Common, after the parade, the booths, but most of the booths are set up there. We have sixty-eight, we're up to about seventy spaces. We keep getting requests. We could accommodate many more, but unfortunately, the booths go very quickly. So, come support your local nonprofits. We did, the Morrison House again is doing the reenactment, so they're going to have Captain Morrell down there with his cannon. They're going to do cannon shoots. They'll have the skirmishes. They're also having a blacksmith, a live working blacksmith this year. So, that'll be a nice addition to the event. The Londonderry Sings is going on. That's in the Londonderry High School cafeteria. That's from one to three, so that's our version. If I don't, I'm sure American Idol isn't watching us, to sue us, but that's our version of American Live Idol, so everybody can come in and view it. This, last year at the Grange, it was so popular, we had to turn people away. So, the venue at the cafeteria will probably give people more of an opportunity to see. The Lions, again, will be doing their festivities across the street, which is sausages and food. The Presbyterian, the Methodist Church will also be doing a pulled pork and foods. Their profits go to some donations that they've clearly, they'll also be having the PVC Pirates doing their robotic demonstrations over there. So, that will be an opportunity. Wildlife encounters will be there, again, with their creatures. Bingo is a must. If we don't have bingo, we get yelled at very, very loudly. So, Bingo is at three-thirty to four-thirty at the Pavilion. isn't watching us to sue us, but that's our version of American Live Idol, so everybody can come in and view it. This, last year at the Grange, it was so popular, we had to turn people away, so the venue at the cafeteria will probably give people more of an opportunity to see. The Lions again will be doing their festivities across the street, which is sausages and food. The Presbyterian, the Methodist Church will also be doing a pulled pork and foods. Their profits go to some donations that they've clearly, they'll also be having the PVC Pirates doing their robotic demonstrations over there, so that will be an opportunity. Wildlife Encounters will be there, again with their creatures. Bingo is a must, if we don't have Bingo, we get yelled at very, very loudly, so Bingo is at 3:30 to 4:30 at the Pavilion. We have lots of prizes. I have to say that we have unbelievably gotten support, we've gotten probably over $4,700 in just small prizes to be divvied out between Bingo, London Dairy Sings, and the baby contest. So we've done really well. Fisher Cat tickets, baseball, signed baseball, it's just amazing what we've gotten from that, and so that's, it really, we've really done well in that area. The last event on the Common that day is Applestock, it's run by the high school student council, they'll have a battle of the band, so to speak, so that's good for all the kids, they can come down, that hits the high school range. It starts about 7, goes till about 10:30, but that's a really good event, so that's, you know, that's a nice way for the kids to, the high school kids to get together before school and stuff. The bandstand will have the Hudson Legion American Band, like we always do, and then we'll have some demonstrations from the House of Samurai, and then the drum line is on at 2 o'clock, and after that, we have flashback entertainment that will be on the Common, doing DJ and karaoke, if anyone's interested in taking out their singing voice. We also will have the kids' game on the Common, pieing contests, pinatas, wheelbarrow races, sack races, so a lot of that from what we've had before. And then Sunday, we'll top it off with the Christian Concert, that's from 3 to 6 PM, and if anything rains, they move indoors, and if it does rain on Friday, which it's not going to, because I have faith that we'll get this all through, the only thing that doesn't have a rain date or a rain location is the fireworks, they're completely canceled until next year. So if you have any questions, you can go to oldhomeday.com, there's a printout brochure there, there's a list of all the events, it just has all the information for everyone, but I would be amiss if I left here without thanking our platinum sponsors, all of our sponsors actually, and I'll run through them very quickly. Our platinum sponsors give us $1,000 more, and that's Cracker Barrel, Dana Farver, New Hampshire Oncology, Hematology, Freezer Warehouse, Granite Ridge Energy, Hampshire First Bank, The House of the Samurai, Image Ability, London Dairy Chiropractic, Market Basket, Murray's Auto Recycling, Orchard Christian Fellowship, Hillsbury Realty, Prudential Verani Realty, and Stonyfield. Our gold sponsors are Central Communications Corp., Coke, Continental Paving, London Dairy Lions Club, Manchester-Boston Regional Airport, Pepsi, and Shady Hill Greenhouse. That's a donation of 500 or more. And then our silver sponsors are Cabot Cheese, Dairy News, Giovanni's of London Dairy, Let's Play Music and Make Art, Peabody Funeral Home of London Dairy and Dairy, Southern New Hampshire Montessori, and Taekwon Do Karate Club of the Lions. So that's, without them, we couldn't make this work. We probably are a little off in our actual dollar figure, in the sense we've probably only got 13K this year in actual money donations, but we did do well in gift certificates and things for other areas. Other than that, that's it. I have your t-shirts, I'll give them tomorrow, so she can, they're hidden, so nobody knows what the color is yet.
Alright, thanks Kathy. Did you guys have any questions for Kathy?
No, I just wanted to thank her for all of her efforts, that's great.
Yeah. John, all set? Thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, next we have our Open Space Task Force Report. So Mike Speltz, you're in the audience, I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While John is getting the computers set up, I'd like to begin by thanking the members of the task force, and just quickly reading their names, several of them are here tonight. Art Rug, Representative Heritage Commission, George Herman from the School Board, Bill Manning from the Recreation Commission, Marty Strugis from Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Lynn Wiles, who also agreed to serve as Secretary of Task Force from the Planning Board, Dana Coons, who although only an alternate from the Planning Board, was drafted into being the Vice Chairman, and ably kept everything running along smoothly in the two of the meetings that I could not attend. John Curran from the Budget Committee, Lisa Widmore, alternate from the Budget Committee, also pretty much was there for the entire process. Bob Sauer, London Dairy Trailways, Jeff Locke and at-large representative, Tim McKenny and at-large representative, and Stella Tremblay, our Legislative Representative, and last but certainly not least, John Vogel and Jay Trottier from the Town Staff, who did pretty much all the work. I want to just say that we showed the version that you received before this meeting to the Director of Research at the Forest Society, and he opined that it's probably the best open space plan in the state that he has seen. I'm reluctant to share that with you, because the last time we awarded one of our planning staff with the best-in-state moniker, you know, Merrimack stole him from us, so I'd ask the people at home to keep this quiet.
Bound to heaven.
So let me jump right into this, and I'll apologize in advance.
Hit one of the lights.
Dave? I have quite a few slides, so I'm going to move through this very quickly. I would be glad to entertain, you know, questions for as long as you want to chat about this, but my expectation is that you're gonna need time to digest this. There are 72 pages of material here, and this is gonna be just a brief introduction. Thanks very much, Sean.
Hey, don't go Yano Sonos, okay?
I could never get the accent down.
No, I wouldn't want you to.
Alright, I want to show you this caveat, and I especially urge the members of the Port of State that are here, that this is not the report, this is a briefing summary of the report. The report is available on the Town website, and I'd urge you to go to that for exact detail. Next slide, please. So about a year ago, the Council gave the task force a charge, and the summary line of it was to basically figure out how we're gonna do what the master plan told us to do, protect the natural resources needed to sustain a livable London Dairy. You gave us, I think, five phases to do that work in, and I'll point those out as we go through the briefing here. Clearly, this was an opportune time to do this, because we're going into a master planning cycle, and this can be an input to that. You asked us in particular to look at the economic viability of the open space plan. It's great to have, you know, an open space plan, but if it's unaffordable, then it doesn't really mean anything, and we took a little bit different tack, and this time around focused on natural services, rather than natural resources. Next slide. So at the bottom, there are some key things that we needed to keep in mind, and that is, you see those questions up at the top there, how much open space is enough? And that leads to the question, you know, well, when will we be done? We've been working hard at open space now since about 1978, and, you know, how much more is it gonna take to finish, and can we afford it? The key assumptions that the task force made going into this process was that we're gonna approach this from a rather selfish standpoint, which is to say, what's in this for us? By protecting open space, what benefits does that provide to us humans, us residents of London Dairy? In addition, we knew that in order to make this work, we needed to sustain those benefits over the long term, so we need not just to protect open space, but to make sure that it stayed in a condition that it would provide benefits to us. And then, of course, like any good efficient American organization, we wanted to get the most for the least cost. Next slide, please. The first task you gave us was inventory, what do we have now? Another thing that we did differently this time around was to look at what we call temporary protection. So these are areas of land that, while they don't have permanent protection under, because they're not under a conservation easement, or they're not owned by the town as conservation land, nonetheless, they are removed from the threat of development, at least for the time being, and I'll go into a little more detail on that, but you'll see that we really have about 8,000 acres of at least temporarily protected open space in town, and it's roughly split 4,000, 4,000, between permanent and temporary protection, and that represents about 30% of the town. So we have made enormous progress since we really started this with the Musquash Purchase in 1978. Next slide. So where does it come from? Roughly speaking, about a third of it is done, was done by the town, a third of it was done by other entities than the town, you know, outside state, fed, other organizations, and a little over a third of it was done by virtue of the regulations that we as a town put in place, for example, our wetlands ordinance, and the RSA's that the state has in place, especially protecting wetlands. Next slide, please. What did this cost us? We have spent $15 million since that first big purchase in 1978, which has resulted in almost 2,000 acres of land being preserved, with another 821 acres that came under protection without any cost to the town, from the various sources you can see there. So you can look at, again, at the pie chart, now remember, of the 8,000 acres I discussed on the previous slide, we're only talking here about a little less than 3,000. So this is just the open space that the town has protected in one fashion or another. Biggest chunk through ownership, next biggest chunk, conservation easement, and then a combination of other things, including gifts, tax liens, donations, and action by state agencies. Next slide, please. Not expected to look at the detail of this, but the key here is that this is the extent to which we have been able to use other people's money. The bars on the left represent the cost of various lands brought under conservation, the blue bars are town money, the green bars are other people's money, and unfortunately, what you'll see is that in the early years, where at the bottom of the chart, we were more successful at using other people's money. The problem is that with the recession and the lead-up to it, funding sources have simply dried up, in particular, the L-Chip program at the state level, and a lot of the federal programs as well. Next slide. You also asked us to look into stewardship. Again, remember, 8,000 tons of protected open space, we're responsible for about 1,700 acres that we own, and another 1,100 acres that we hold easements on, but that responsibility is shared among the six entities that you see there, and I won't, you know, go into all the detail, but the Conservation Commission obviously plays a role probably on the majority of it. Huge amount of assistance provided by London Dairy Trailways. The Town Manager has direct control with advice from the other commissions on the Town Common and Historic District, Recreation Departments have the fields, the School District has their lands, Rockham County Conservation District holds easements on a lot of our orchards, and not least, but certainly not least, landowners, and you'll see this later, are gonna be left to manage their own land, and so they've got to have a responsibility for the stewardship of their land. So it's a very fragmented situation, and that really is a weakness, that we addressed in our conclusions and recommendations. Next slide. We don't spend very much money on stewardship. What you see on the right there is a map of the, I think it's 17 miles of trails in the Musquash, almost all done by London Dairy Trailways, at almost no cost to the town. The only money that's gone into this tremendous asset is money, is basically lumber, to build bridges, which the Trailways folks drag out in the woods and assemble out there. So you can see that, you know, we have spent less than $1,000 a year, it's up now to $3,300 in the last budget, but that's not all stewardship money, that goes for a lot of different things that the Conservation Commission pays for out of their budget. By far and away, most of the stewardship that we now do is done by volunteers at no cost to the town. This is probably a problem, because one of the things that came out is that there is a real demand to get more use out of our town-owned land, particularly for its recreation value, and the task force is recommending that we pursue that. Obviously, that's gonna cost money, and we'll address that as well. Next slide. So, second phase then was to develop detailed information on the town's needs for natural services, and what you see on the right is sort of our guiding stars from this point in the process forward. These are the things that the task force agreed, and it was reinforced by the survey that we did of, you know, all the residents in town. These are the things that we want from our open spaces, these are the things that we expect, that are the reason for protecting open space, to get these things from our open spaces and the natural resources that reside on them. Next slide. So we talk about needs, what we're really trying, we're asking directly is this question of how much is enough, and it is not an easy question to get your arms around. Conservation biologists will say, in most ecosystems, 25 to 50% of the land cover should remain undisturbed. In Massachusetts, they have a statewide plan that calls for 70% of the landscape to be conserved. They have a little, it's a little easier down there, I think, because they have a concentrated area in Boston, and then, you know, a lot of fairly open land in the western part of the state. But these are some of the things that we were able to look at. The question is, what, we know what those services are, you saw on the previous slide, well, what is the land that we need to provide those services? So we developed some metrics to find, identify that land, all land is not created equal, but find the land that provides those services the best. Then buffer that land to make sure that it can be sustained over the long term, connect it, which is again, a part of sustaining it, so that populations can move back and forth, and then do it in a way that's equitable, so that all the residents of London Dairy benefit from the open space that we have. Next slide. I'm gonna go through these next slides very quickly. Each one of these slides could be a fascinating 15-minute discussion by John on how they were built, but basically, each one takes one of those key 10 services that we want from nature, and identifies the things on the ground that provide them, in the case of drinking water, aquifers, wetlands, streams, and where our community wells are. Next slide. So then we have areas that store floodwaters, next slide, areas where we have prime agricultural soils, next slide, views, and this is a little bit of GIS whiz-bang here by identifying places that people saw as good view sheds. John was able, using the topography then, to say, well, where does your line of sight stop, and that's what those areas represent. Next slide. The floors, excuse me, large forest blocks that you see here, we used as the metric for both outdoor recreation and preserving large contiguous forest blocks, which is what's necessary to preserve a lot of the natural habitat for various species that we have in town. Next slide. I'm losing my voice, I hope we make it through this. And then we have, from the state, the New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan, and their assessment of the best habitat in London Dairy, and that's what you see there. And we took a look at all of the historic properties that have been identified in town, and asked, and to what extent can the open space that we protect enhance their views? You know, here you see the historic area along Hillsbury Road, you can imagine if that, if the scene here was set in a subdivision, it would look not nearly as attractive as it does now. Next slide. And then finally, in this one, we don't, can't show you the map for, because the actual location of endangered species in London Dairy is confidential information, so that people that would abuse it or take advantage of it, don't go out and look for it, but it's safe to say that we have one of the largest hair and rookeries in southern New Hampshire, in the Musquash, and so, and there's sort of a token of what we're trying to accomplish there. Next slide. So, having identified what it is we want, and how to measure it, we then asked the task force members to go through an exercise of prioritizing, you know, every, you want everything, you want the good drinking water, you want the recreation land, but if you can imagine mentally taking all those maps that you just saw and superimposing them one on the other, you know, that would probably cover 80% of the town, and that's simply not, you know, something that's feasible for us to do. So the question was to find the best of the best, and we asked people, said, okay, here's $100, you can spend it, but you can only spend $100 buying these various services that you want from nature, how would you spend it? And we quickly converged, the way the process works, each person voted independently of everybody else, then we compared results, people explained why they were off the average, and we voted again, and converged very quickly on this, and you'll see here that drinking water, by far and away, the most important, and then other important things being agricultural land, outdoor recreation, habitat, and large contiguous forest blocks, those were the biggies. And then we asked the task force to assign a value of distributing land in such a way that nobody would be two, no more than a 10-minute walk from... that nobody would be two, no more than a 10-minute walk from 10 acres of open space and providing connections between those. So the top block is properties that are inherent in the land, the bottom two are inherent in where the land occurs on the landscape. So we asked them, well, how much of a boost do you want to give those last two categories? And that came out at a 4.6% sort of bonus score. Next slide. So when you take those numbers and you apply them to every single acre of land in Lunedary, say, well, how many of these do you score the metrics on? You get a map like this. So you can see there are very few places in Lunedary that don't contribute something to the natural services that we enjoy, but obviously, we can't, you know, we cannot conserve all of that green space. The darker the green on this map, the more valuable it is in terms of the resources and the services that it provides. So we focused on the top 30%. Next slide. We then said, okay, any, we're trying to get now from, you know, nature's boundaries, which you saw on the previous slide, to the real-life property ownership boundaries that we have in the real world. Any property less than eight acres, it's got some of these, it's in this top tier of land, probably isn't going to be subdivided anymore, probably has something on it already. So the technique for that is going to be simply to make people do, or ask people to do the right thing and provide the information that they need to do the right thing with their land. So we basically looked at land that was greater than eight acres in size. We then linked those lands together so that they formed an interconnected network. And when you do that, you come out with 210 tax parcels that contain the 6,500 total acres. So we took those and prioritized them by threat, and that was based on how accessible are they? What kind of road fundage do they have? How buildable are they? And then looked at, what do they cost? And how much resource do they really contribute? And then for areas that were not zoned residential, so commercial, industrial, we made a decision to treat those differently and assume that whatever, because Lunedary is so unbalanced between its residential and commercial versus industrial zoning, not zoning, but development, we didn't want to, you know, take any commercial or industrial zone parcel totally out of the possibility of being developed for that purpose and providing a tax-positive benefit to the town. So we made a decision that those parcels would be protected through the subdivision and site plan regulation process, the design review committee that takes a hard look at every plan and looks at it from the standpoint of, you know, is there a way that we can build this without, with having less impact on the environment? Next slide. So if you take those parcels that are, all the parcels in Lunedary, there's 10,000 roughly tax parcels in Lunedary, about 2,500 of those fall into that high-value natural resource area, and that contains 366 parcels. Now, of those 366, all but 210 are either already developed or already conserved. So there's about, I've got that reversed. 210 that are sort of still in play, haven't been developed but could be. And the remainder are, of the 156 are developed or conserved. So you see here how they sorted themselves out. So I talked about threats. So the high-threat ones are the ones with the road fundage and good development potential. The low-threat ones are the ones that are, you know, off on a classics road or they're a wetland. And the strategy of how to deal with them is what you see on the left-hand side there. So high costs meaning, you know, probably there's no regulation that's going to protect them from development, but, you know, we may end up having to provide, purchase some kind of interest in that land. So it's that 55 parcels that are really our key challenge and, you know, followed by the 34 medium-threat high costs. The low-cost ones, again, are, for example, you know, power lines, wetland parcels, that sort of thing. And the development pending are the ones I was talking about. That's Woodmont, that's Lorden, that's, you know, all these areas where we're going to probably have to develop, protect them by regulation, by regulatory action in the planning process, site plan review, subdivision review, rather than through any kind of outright town interest. Next slide. Now, this is the same slide, but instead of looking at numbers of parcels, it's looking at numbers of acres. And there you see 27,000 acres in the town, about 17,000 in this area we want to protect, 12,000 that are in the larger parcel sizes. But then when you start sorting it out, you'll see that there's, the ones that we need to think about funding are the 1,800 in the high threat and maybe the 900 in the medium threat. And those are, so again, those are acres. So if you think we've so far conserved about 2,500 acres, and there's, you know, roughly 2,500 there, you would say that we're halfway there. It actually works out to about 60%. And in terms of resource value, we're a little bit beyond that because we've basically been picking at the low-hanging fruit. Next slide, please. The third task you gave us was to take an analysis of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I've tried to cram all this on one slide. It could expand to five or six slides, but in our analysis, these were the key things. And I'll just point out, if you notice, the top one on all four categories is geography. It is our great, is our great strength and our great weakness. Now, because we sit in this golden triangle between two interstate highways and south of the airport and 111, which is the major east-west, you know, avenue in southern New Hampshire, well, we have tremendous development pressure, but we have also tremendous natural gifts that just as a result of where Lunedary landed on the map. And then if you go down beyond that, you know, I don't think any of these are probably surprises to you. One of our great strengths, again, is the land use protections that we've already got in place. That's how come. Half of our conserved land is basically protected because we have these temporary conservation measures in place. One of the weaknesses you'll notice, stewardship. We really have a lot more to do in terms of organizing better our stewardship efforts. And then external influences is one that we, you know, we don't have any control over the fact that they're adding, you know, doubling the size of I-93, what's going to happen to the airport, and, you know, what's, what are the towns around us going to do in terms of their development? We can, but we can plan for them and react to them. Next slide. Next, you asked us to, I think you asked us this, but anyway, you said be sure to stay with the public and do as much as you can to involve the public. So we ended up doing a survey. 236 people fully filled out the survey form. This is not a scientific survey. In other words, it's not a random sample that we can supply a conservation, or a confidence interval to, but, you know, it's self-selected people that cared about open space. And I would venture to say that it may be more representative, people that are active in the town and vote in the town than in the town as a whole, but that's probably what we want. So we asked them, you know, do you know the open spaces we have? And it turns out, like Bucky's Ingraham in South Lunedary, there are a lot of people that never heard of that, and here's a great asset that's available to us. What about land that you use that's open that isn't part of the town's open space efforts? And you see here, you know, the trails, the gas line, which is a huge asset that we have. And people said, my own backyard. And that's great because much of our strategy is based on people doing the right thing with their own backyard. And, you know, Woodmont Orchard, you know, that's, explains why people are so divided about it, I think. We asked them about these, the same sort of, we showed them the same 10 items that we've been chasing all along here and asked them, you know, are these nature services things that are important to you? And the overwhelming answer was, was yes. And amazingly, you know, big concerns, limit development on sensitive habitats, develop trail access, and promote it. So again, it goes back to getting the word out on the assets that we already have. When we asked them, should we stop conserving? Two-to-one margin said, no, keep going. But I'll have more to say on that because they aren't necessarily willing to pay for it. And that's the next bullet there. Even though by this large margin, people wanted us to continue with the conservation purchases, about half of them, a little over half, said, yeah, but, you know, you know, be careful about spending my money. And when we asked them, what about stewardship? Even though there seems to be a huge cry for greater stewardship, only more than, less than half really agreed with that statement. So it was a little bit of a mixed message. But as far as, you know, committing town resources, and that doesn't necessarily mean just money, but, you know, staff time, volunteer time. When it came to water quality, by far and away, the most important, the citizens want to see us do things to protect water quality. And then you see that some of the other things there. What was surprising is there wasn't a lot of support within the residents for doing anything to enhance our historic structures. Next slide. Then we asked them just very simple questions that we could put some good numbers to. Have we done enough to protect conservation land in Lunedary? And really, I mean, given that, you know, the error that's inherent in something like this, roughly evenly split between yes, no, and I don't know. And but, and you'll see that there's a group of I-don't-knows that run down this slide, which tells me there's a lot of people that don't, you know, know what we're doing in terms of open space protection, and it says that there's another sort of job that we need to do, and you'll see that in the recommendations, that we make education and outreach an important part of what we do going forward. So are you willing to pay more taxes? 42% yes, 22% no. That's a dead heat statistically, I'm sure. So, you know, again, a very even split. And so those don't-knows are going to decide which way we go on this. And are you willing to pay more taxes for stewardship? But again, this is a little bit of a surprise. Less willing to put money into stewardship than there were into more conservation purchases. But again, you know, fairly evenly split. And then, this was a key question that we based one of our important recommendations on. We told them that right now, we're spending about 2.7% of our budget on conservation. You know, what is the right percentage? And well, people, majority said more than 2%. When you average the numbers and you throw out a couple of real outliers, like somebody said 50% or something like that, when you threw those out, the average came out to 2.7%. So I think we're doing something right here. Next slide. So, based on that, in terms of our financial plan, you know, if you accept that we've got a target here of these 210 parcels that we would like to protect in a perfect world, which it isn't, we recommend that a steady state to approach the funding. So try to have a level of effort that continues over the years at the same amount with not a lot of ups and downs, at least until we get to the point where we can declare victory. So we stayed with that 2.7%. And then we asked the finance director to lay out a program that would sort of maintain that 2.7%. Next slide. What you see here is a open space funding bonding program. So it doesn't talk, it's not, doesn't include grants that we might get, it doesn't include land use change tax. Right now, I think this year, we're at 925,000, but we asked for a program that kept us under 900,000 for the next 20, I guess, through 2030, I think, if you go all the way out there. So roughly the next 20 years. She assumed an interest rate, she assumed 10-year bonds because that's what we've been doing. It seems to be a good compromise between, you know, excessive interest costs and yet not putting all this burden on current taxpayers.
Mike, can, John has a question.
Yes.
Sorry, guys, I just got to ask a question. I got to hear the CIP on Thursday, so I'm just trying to get my arms around something here. I've got some of the questions in front of me, we're on this bonding question. One of the questions, let me read the question to you here. The town should stop conservation purchases for the next five years. 67% of the people, 22% agree we should stop, 10% somewhat agree, 23% somewhat disagree, 43% disagree. So what you're saying here on this slide is, is that you're going to come to the CIP asking for $9 million?
Well, CIP only goes out, what, six years?
Whatever it is, but if it was for, you know, if it was for 10 years, you know, you're going to, so six years, you're going to come and you're going to ask for $6 million?
No, can you wait till the next?
Make the next slide and I'll answer that question.
I'm just trying to understand so I don't get surprised on Thursday.
Well, here, well, we'll jump to this slide.
Actually, I think, John, this is.
This is what we're, so it'd be a million in 2013, a million in 2015, a million in 2021, a million in 2023, and $4 million in 2025. So I think what you might have been doing is go back to the previous slide.
I think it's $3 million in 2025.
The, the.
Yeah, what happens is as the current bonds are paid off, that allows wiggle room for a new bond to be released and paid for, keeping the total tax burden under 2.7%. So again, in the far out in years, closer to 2024, some of the bonds that are currently being paid off are completely paid off, and that allows room for larger ones to be floated.
So, what am I going to see Thursday night?
I think that within the next five years, John, you would see something on the order of 2013 and 2015. So I think you would see about $2 million worth.
Yeah, that's what's on the CIP request, is $2 million.
I just don't want to be surprised on Thursday night.
No, it's absolutely consistent with what I'm telling you here, the request.
I know, I mean, because everything I'm hearing from everybody submitting to the CIP is, is a tough row to hoe here.
Sure.
That's just not you, that's everybody.
Yeah, I understand, and I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, John.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe it would have been better to reverse the order on these two slides. So, you know, what you see on the left, the five bars on the left are existing bonds that we are paying off on now. In the year 2011, we're spending $925,000. In 2013, we'll pay off the bond that we floated in 2002, which would give us then a million dollars of headroom, which is what the CIP request is. And then you can extend that analysis. The $4 million bond that we floated in 2003 was a 20-year bond, so it doesn't get paid off until 2023, which is why that bar doesn't appear till out there. But, you know, you could sort of connect an arrow between each of those bars to figure out, you know, when it was paid off. Now I'll go back to the previous slide. So the black line on this slide says that if we stopped bonding open space purchases, you know, we would gradually, you know, pay off the bonds and our payment each year would, you know, approach zero. The pink line is that if you floated all of the bonds shown on that previous slide, you would stay at that level of, you know, a little between 800 and $900,000. If we were to extend beyond that, what, you know, the plan is sort of built on the theory we only have about 20 years, and, you know, either that, at the end of that time, we're going to be conserved out or built out. So they'll, at the end of the 2025 timeframe, theoretically, that pink line will look like the blue line and tail off. Is that, it's a little bit complicated. Is that, is it worth taking questions to that, or should we just keep marching? Because we're almost at the end and, okay. I know I'm taking a lot of your time, and I do appreciate it. So what we showed you is $7, a million worth of bonds. And these are sort of current year dollars, which is kind of, I think, the only way we can handle this and wrap our minds around it. During that time, if we use the previous average, we could expect to get in 3.2 million of land use change tax, which gives us about 10.2 million. Again, our experience has been that we've roughly gotten 25%. Again, our experience has been that we've roughly gotten 25% in grants, you know, match or bargain sales, donations, you know, stuff happens that we get it, we get money in. So in that 20-year period, we might expect another 2.5 million, giving us just shy of $13 million of money to work with. If you take those 210 parcels, the assessor says they are right now worth $37 million. So there looks like a $24 million shortfall between what we, if we could just go out and buy all those parcels of land today, but we only have, you know, the 13 million. So how do we address that shortfall? Next slide. I think it's actually a lot less than a $36 million requirement. $8 million is parcels that are between 8 and 20 million, 8 and 20 acres, that probably are going to be protected by their owners doing the right thing. And, you know, they're small, they're expensive. So I think our $36 million problem is more like a $28 million problem. A lot of these parcels don't need to be protected in their entirety. Obviously, we didn't ask the assessor to break this down. But what we're going to want is probably the backland that has less value. We assumed, it says 15, I think it's closer to 18 years, time to do this. If we have another set of years, like 2007 and 2008, 2009, we may have more than 15 years, which would help. We have benefited in the past from other agencies coming in, DES, Fish and Game, Forest Society, they may do some of this work for us. The $36 million includes the assessed valuation of Woodmont, of Lorden, of all the commercial properties around the airport. Obviously, most of that value is going to be taken out because those are going to be developed. And as I said, we're going to use our subdivision and site plan regulations to try to save what we can of the natural resources there. So the bottom line is, I think that our, the resources we have and the projects we will actually have to tackle are probably pretty well matched. Obviously, we can't predict the future over 20 years with any real accuracy, but we can look at this every five years and figure out how we're doing. Next slide. I'm only, I think, I'm going to go through these, we got a series of these slides, but I really wanted to just get them on here so that people that wouldn't read the report would at least get to see what some of these recommendations are. But they fall in these main categories here. Next slide, please. So continue to protect open space. We are 60% of there in terms of acreage, we're 68% in terms of resource value, you know, so we're more than halfway over this barrier. And we ought to continue. Next slide, please. We lack a comprehensive approach to stewardship. We have those five or six little fiefdoms that I showed you earlier, each doing very good work on their little piece of the pie, but we haven't got a overall plan that pulls this all together. And there's certainly much more that could be done in terms of recreation on our town-owned land. If we're willing to pay for it, then we should, we should proceed to try to do that. Next slide, please. Water resources, absolutely, the key thing, and one of the most important things we can probably do is to update our 21-year-old water resources management plan. We don't really know where we are in terms of water right now because we're woefully out of date. So that's one of the key things to do. Next slide. Education and outreach. Hopefully, this is clear from the, what I've showed you before is, you know, we have to do much better at involving people with open space so that they don't answer, don't know, so that at least they'll have an opinion on open space and they will have the ability to know where open space is, what they can do where. And so we've got our work cut out for us there. And this is sort of an outgrowth of the previous slide that we do a lot more in terms of recreation. You know, some of these ideas might be a little wild and crazy, but our thought was let the thousand flowers bloom and then we can dig through and do what makes sense. Next slide, please. There's a huge role, and you saw this, when half, when you see that half of our land is protected, is protected by our own regulations and state RSAs. So there's more that we can do, and that's what these recommendations refer to. But it is by far and away the least expensive way to protect our open spaces. Next slide, please. I've talked in some detail with funding already, so I won't go into that, but I want to point out that in terms of stewardship, the task force recommended really two things. And this is the one place where I have to admit that we passed the buck and kicked the can down the road. The stewardship problem is big enough that it really wasn't something we could tackle in the timeframe that we had to do our work. And what we're recommending is that we create a task force of all these, these people that are involved with stewarding town-owned interests and figure out how to do a conservation, a comprehensive stewardship plan. And that would include, you know, putting a cost to all these nice things that we'd like to do. And what we're suggesting is that we use the land use change tax, that the town has the ability, I think, and I've asked the staff to confirm this, to create a non-lapsing stewardship fund that could be a sort of a sub-account of the conservation fund, but in some way protect that money so that when we've figured out the stewardship plan we want and what that plan costs, then we have a way to fund it. Otherwise, it's silly to talk about enhanced stewardship because it's going to cost money. I think it's going to take either some staff time or consulting time and a little bit of, you know, bricks of mortar and signboards to make this thing work. But the demand seems to be there to do more with stewardship, therefore, we felt we needed to come up with a way to pay for it. And I think that's the last conclusion, right? So what, all we're asking you to do is really accept this port for review. And then I think each of the agencies that are involved are going to have to figure out how they want to go forward with it. But hopefully, this will not just be a plan that goes on the shelf, but can be incorporated in the master plan work and we can take these recommendations and figure out which one we want to turn into actions. So again, I want to express my profound appreciation to the members of the task force and particularly to John and Jay who did such great work on this, on this plan.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing that forward. I think I'll probably bring it to the council. I think that tonight we were expecting to get this for review, just as Mike had mentioned. Does the council have any questions for Mike?
None at this time.
Okay. Tom?
I know you're drinking from a fire hose there. I apologize.
Yeah. You had 236 people completed the survey?
That's right.
Oh, okay.
More of them started it, but we only looked at the ones that went through and answered each question.
And towards the end in your, in your funding recommendation, or your funding plan proposal, you indicated that you assumed the town would be built out in 15 years. But I think 15 years is when you're also expecting funding to kick in as well, too, 15 years from now, 2026. Am I correct?
The first one would come 2000.
I know the last one, I'm sorry about that. I know there's some in the middle there, but I'm looking at the end.
Right.
I guess I'm wondering, why would you anticipate funding needs if town's built out?
Well, it wouldn't, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a need.
It was just, just something I was just stuck with as you were presenting it there.
Okay. John?
I'm all set. I'll just, I think we have a lot of work to do.
Yep, we do. Okay. Well, again, thank you and to the commission for bringing all this information to us. It's a lot to digest. And you're right, there is quite a bit of work to do to look at it and figure out what we're going to do and where to go. So we do appreciate you bringing it tonight, Mike, and thanks for your time. And thanks for the commission's time. Appreciate it and thanks for coming.
I very appreciate the patience of the council as I waded through all that.
Did you have something else? No, no. Okay. All right, and we're still in public comment, so does anybody else have anything that they'd like to do as far as questions or comments? Because we are still in public comment. Okay, seeing none. We are now out of public comment. I need a motion, actually.
There's no public hearings.
We don't have anything in public hearing. And old business. Okay, Dave, old business.
Yeah, just to close the loop on one of the action items we had, from June 20th, the council at that point requested Conservation Commission consideration of allocating a portion of their land use funds towards helping pay debt service incurred for open space acquisitions. And the commission did notify the council that they have voted to allocate $50,000 in conservation funds towards the FY13 debt service for the fiscal year beginning next July 1st. And also to authorize the expenditure of 5% of the total funds collected through the land use change tax beginning July 1st to be applied to the FY14 open space debt service. And I believe there's a copy of Deb Levin's letter to the council summarizing that action in your council packet.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no action required, it's just that what we'll do is we'll incorporate these funds when we construct the FY13 budget.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that. It's a good gesture on their part and it'll certainly help us with our budget woes. Okay, so that's it for old business. We go into new business. Dave, this is coming from you, I'm sure, or Andre, community development office staffing levels.
Andre.
Hello. Andre Guerin, Community Development Director, here before you tonight and to seek the town council's authorization to fill the town planner's position. As you know, after 11 years, Tim Thompson had the opportunity to take a new job over in Town of Merrimack as their Community Development Director, leaving obviously the position open in my department. So again, the purpose of this report is to seek the town council's authorization to fill the position. As the department's mission, and I won't read it all, but it is to, and the London Community Development Department will actively work towards being the most innovative, knowledgeable, and responsive department in the state. And I think we have a staff that, over the last 11 years I've been here, have done just that. Have really committed themselves to improve their knowledge of what their responsibilities are and make this department very accessible and productive. As the, as an overview of the department, this is on page two of your report, the Community Development Department consists of three divisions, the Planning and Economic Development Division, GIS, and Building. Department handles the growth and building-related activities for Lunedary. The Community Department staff is responsible for review and each development, building, and zoning proposal submitted to the town to ensure that the current policies, the rules and regulations, and long-term planning recommendations are advanced and followed. The department also involves and is involved in assisting town leadership in creating and shaping planning, building, health, and economic development policy and serves as advisors to the town council, planning board, zoning board of adjustment, conservation commission, heritage commission, master plan steering committee, economic development task force, capital improvements committee, open space task force, and other committees, boards, and commissions as assigned. And enforcement of the town zoning code also falls within the department's responsibility. This is a brief history as to, as to on the economic development side of what has taken place. From 1999 to 2009, the Community Development Department has recruited, fostered, or ushered over 2 and 1/2 million square feet of new expanded manufacturing, office, warehouse, and retail development, resulting in assessed value of over $400 million. And I have attached the worksheet that shows that of all the development that either has been new or expanded in the community for your review. As documented in the New Hampshire Employment and Labor Market Information, that's LMI, between 1999 and 2000, number of good-producing businesses locating in Lunedary increased by 7%, and number of service-related businesses increased by 5%. 2,339 new jobs were created from 1999 to 2009, which is an increase of 24% within the same time period. And also, the town's valuation has close to tripled over the last decade from $1.3 million to $3.3 billion, billion dollars, I should say, $1.3 billion to $3.3 billion. The town plan is positioned as responsible for usher, ensuring that each application submitted for review by the planning board is complete and prepared in accordance with the rules, regulation, and policy of the community and constructed in accordance with the approved plan. And on page three is the organization of the, of the, of the Community Development Department, as I described earlier. And also following is the my job description and my responsibilities and my accountability to the town manager and those identified. And on page five, you have the town planner's responsibility, which I'll read the first part. Town planner serves as an essential role and support capacity to the Community Development Director. As an aside, when I was first hired here in 1999 and interviewed by then-town manager Dick Plant, one of the first things I asked him, I said, is the town plant, town assistant planner position real? And he said, yes. I said, is it funded? He said, yes. So come, I hire somebody, he goes, yes, all the above. I said, okay. Because with a town this size, knowing, and I knew the previous planning director, Peter Loewit, who served in my position before I had, you know, heard a lot of discussions with him as to where Lunedary was going at the time, what issues it faced, and it became more apparent after hearing what he said, you know, the need for that position was key, which is the reason why he had worked with the town manager at the time to get it funded. The town planner is responsible for reviewing, for the review and reporting of subdivision site plan submissions for its residential, commercial, industrial development. The planner is in charge of the development and amendment of zoning ordinance to the subdivision and site plan regulation. Planner assists the public and developers in questions regarding the town development review process, interpreting zoning ordinance, subdivision site plan regulations. When needed, serves as liaison with the planning board, heritage commission, conservation commission, zoning board of adjustment, and other groups and boards and commission as assigned by the director. The town planner also oversees the department internship program and the community, the capital improvements program. And also following that is the essential duties and responsibilities of the, of the town planner's position, among many of, again, the correspondent coordinate reviews of projects performed by outside consultant, coordinates the conservation, with the Conservation Commission and Town and Land Conservation Program, provides technical assistance on zoning ordinance, procedures, regulations, and town policies. I know this board, as well as many other boards and employees, often will go to the town planner. Is for, is for guidance or answers to various aspects of the zoning ordinance or any aspect of review process. Again, he oversees the internship program, acts on my behalf when the, you know, when I'm not there, and coordinates with the GIS planner with regard to GIS matters and material of information that may be needed. And also, too, the GIS manager planning position. I think some of you may have been around him back in 2001, when the geographic, geographical information system were contemplated by the Town of Lunedary. One of the first things that we did is determine whether or not there would be a need for a GIS program in Lunedary. So what we did first, and the reason why we conducted a GIS needs assessment is that in talking with other communities that have gone out and instituted a GIS program, every one of them, that I spoke with them, said, do not embark on this route without doing a needs assessment. Find out what you're going to use it for. And second, when you decide to move forward with a GIS program, make sure there's a person to run it. I know there's a city on the east coast, on the coast, that embarked on a GIS as one of the first communities to do so, but that program sat on a shelf for years before they used it because they didn't have anybody to run it. And so that was something that we had a discussion with the town council back in 2001, that if we were to move forward with this after a needs assessment that showed that there would be a need in the departments, in various departments, boards, and commissions on GIS program that will help them, or provide them with the information to make informed decisions, then they move forward with the other component of the GIS program, and that was to hire somebody. So the GIS... So the GIS programs needs a particular set of skills to realize the full benefit and value to the community. The community back in 2003 and 2004 invested $420,000 towards the GIS program, as well as a person to run it. Over the past seven years, the position has done a great job in managing the town's GIS investment and tying its functionality into the many needs of the town's apartments, boards, and commissions. And as you just saw through the conservation plan, that a lot of the supporting information was done by our GIS consultant, and a lot of the mapping information was done by our GIS manager. And the GIS manager position works closely with the assessing department on an update of the tax map with services London Derry previously contracted out. The position has worked and continues to work with the following groups, the school department, leadership of London Derry, planning board, Manchester Boston Regional Airport, assessing department, E911. I believe the board's been working with that particular group with regard to the various road addresses. Department of Public Works, cemetery trustees, conservation commission, fire department, police department, the alert team, economic development, finance department, historic preservation task force, the workforce housing task force, and the open space task force. All three documents were written, developed and written by our GIS manager. And also, obviously, the job description is there, as well as in the following pages on number nine. In comparing London Derry's staffing levels to the various communities that we customarily compare ourselves to, which is Bedford, Derry, Concord, Dover, Hudson, Merrimack, Portsmouth, Rochester, and Salem, you'll see that London Derry's staffing level, its current staffing level, measures up well with the rest. There's a few outliers, but on most part, as you see, the average full-time employee in the planning department is 3.1, and the median is 3. And we're right at 3 with the current positions. And as far as salary, as you can see on page 11, London Derry is towards the lower end of the communities that we compare ourselves to, but given the salary range that we currently have in the LAEA contract, which is between $50,000 to $88,000 and $67,000, $820,000, the previous town planner was budgeted to make $71,370, $347 in there. So within the present range of the position, there's already will be a savings involved because the authorization comes from the town council to hire the position, we were higher within that range. And again, the range in London Derry is $50,000 to $88,000 to $67,000, $820,000. And the median, the average salary of the communities we compare ourselves to is $55,880 to $74,89. And the median salary is $54,382 to $77,477. And also too, within the savings of the top end of the salary, there's also inherent in the LAEA contract that the sick time is for a new employee would be capped out at a lower rate than it currently does for an existing employee. So in conclusion, the Planning and Economic Development Division has several large-scale developments that are either approved in review or in concept stage. And those developments are the Lorden subdivision off Eldery Road, 135 lots, potentially 51 lots were approved in phase one. We get Mill Pond, that's going to soon be before the board in September, 16 lots. The Frieza Warehouse, which is currently under construction at 82,000 square feet. Obviously, you have the Exit 5 Commercial Center, which is soon before the board at 109,000 square feet. Recently approved gas station convenience store at 37,40. We have Elliott Medical Facility, phases four and five, which is slated to be about 60,000 square feet. Recently reconstructed, reconstructed or moved Market Basket at 107,000 square feet. And we have the Pettingill Road area, the Woodmont Common area, and the Jack's Rich Road area. Obviously, three sizable areas for development. Over the last two years, the Community Development Department has been downsized by one part-time employee and one full-time employee, the code enforcement officer and the Planning and Economic Development Division Secretary. The Planning and Economic Division is starting to see signs that the economy is starting to move forward, although slowly it is starting to move forward. In addition to the few examples listed above, the department received more inquiries about the Pettingill Road and Exit 5 area. The planning board is in the beginning stage of its master planning process, and in the midst of submitting a grant application to help offset some of the expense of the project. The workload distribution within the planning and economic development position is functioning well due to the current level of positions, the current positions, and the respective responsibilities. The London Derry economic development efforts are being advanced because the department has the town planner and GIS manager ensuring that the planning and development goals are being met and vice versa. Demand to retain the town planner's position has never been greater. I think over the last 11 years, I think we've come a long way, invested a lot in looking at our process and refining it and streamlining it. And right now, with the current staffing levels, I think, I know that we are doing our job to maintain those and making sure that those investments are paying off. So I think it's imperative that the London Derry maintain the current level of staffing and the Planning and Economic Division so it can adequately address the impending demands and continue to accomplish the goals of the town council, planning board, and the community. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Andre. Bring it up to the council for discussion. John?
I don't have any questions.
None? Okay. Tom?
Andre, I see in the list of duties the town planner has that he serves in acting in your position in the absence, in your absence.
Great.
Okay. So presumably, you're acting in his position in his absence at this point. So one of the questions I would have is, with the development projects you listed there, assuming that we used to have two people doing the work and now we have one, what kind of delay are we talking about to potential developers in responding to various things within the absence in the town planner position?
Right now, we've been, given the current workload, right now, there hasn't been any delay in getting our process through. Unfortunately, it doesn't mean that there's some other things that we were currently working on are getting done in the fashion that we were getting done before the absence of the town planner.
So there is an effect?
Yes, there is.
That's all I had.
With the minimum and maximum ranges of the planner's salary, is that taken into consideration the amount of time that the person is actually spent at the location or at the position? So if they've been there seven, eight, nine, 10 years, it doesn't matter, it's still, the cap's at 67?
Correct. That's the current range out of the LAEA contract.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. On the list of projects that are listed here, I think it's on pages 11 and 12, if you can, give me an estimate, what's the size of these projects, given, or their complexity, versus, let's say, projects a few years ago? I mean, these seem to be major projects compared to, for example, Market Basket, Woodmont. Is that much larger than things that were handled in the past five or six years?
I would say comparable. You know, obviously, like, within a five, six-year period, you had Harvey Industries, 335,000 square feet. And then we had, obviously, Elliott, the first phases of Elliott, one through three, were 88,000, so you have that range. And the projects listed there fall within that range. Obviously, the Harvey is above that range, but what we're finding here are comparable to what we've seen in the past.
Okay.
A little bit smaller size, but comparable.
Is there any difference between, for example, like you said, Harvey Industry, which is essentially one facility, versus something like Woodmont?
Yeah, the complexity of what is, obviously, one, this being the one of the first, the Woodmont being one of the first PUDs, has a lot of moving parts, and we just want to make sure that all those moving parts are being adhered to as opposed to one development, whereas you're just really just looking at one site plan and making sure that site plan's impact on the community is one that meets or within the parameters set in our rules and regulations.
Okay. Thank you. John?
I think my experience is that the developers really define the complexity. And there's some that, you know, sort of understand what we're trying to accomplish, and there's some that are trying to make us understand what they want to accomplish. And I think the ones that add that complexity probably take up a very large percentage of their time. At least that's, usually when they call up and they say, "Can you come to a meeting, meaning me?", it's bad, you know, it means that they... And I don't do anything when I get there, that's the really funny part. It all just sort of happens.
Typically, are a couple of hours, and so it's a couple hours.
Dave, did you just want to give us your...
Yeah, well, we've looked at this position and recommend that the council fill it. If you take a look at the council's current goals for the current fiscal year and previous years, it's all about attempting to drive revenue and enhance economic development. And we also have, I think you've all noted, the vast majority of the community members really enjoy living in the community and the way it's been developed, and that's been a really a multi-pronged approach between the council setting policy, the planning board working real hard, and having a very, very good staff. Also, one thing Andre did not mention is that the duties for his position were increased two years ago when we consolidated the building department and planning into one.
You missed that one, didn't you?
Whereby Andre is now responsible for managing that department. And the responsibilities of that division is growing, because if you notice later on your agenda, there's an ordinance change, so we're going to transfer some of the inspection responsibilities from the fire department or the mechanical systems to the building department. So we've tried to be efficient in using our staff and economizing, but in order to reach the council goals and to allow the community to develop as what the feedback we're receiving a vast majority of the citizens are comfortable with, is that I strongly urge the council to authorize us to fill this position.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the information that's missing on the planners' salaries for Derry and Portsmouth, is that because it's called something different, or?
Yes.
I noticed that they also have a smaller amount of FTEs, so... Well, Salem, okay, Salem and Derry.
Dave, those are salaries. Are we married to those numbers, or can we propose new numbers?
We can operate within the minimum max. We can't, if we look at new numbers, have to go back to LAEA and negotiate those.
We'll negotiate those in the future.
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
So is that, is that a yes? I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
What's that?
The information was missing just for the planners, or was that a different?
Yeah, like Portsmouth, from the minimum max, they no longer have a town planner. Therefore, we didn't have that, and the same thing with Derry, they don't have a town planner.
What do they do instead?
They have a planning assistant, which is, I guess, a half secretary, half assistant, planning assistant that helps with the review, and then you have the director. And Rochester has a...
But Derry is also, just out of fairness, Derry is also structured differently than we are as far as how things are assigned. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
And then Portsmouth, they had four positions, but they no longer have a planner's position. It wasn't a town planner's position like we have here, but it was a planner's position, which is comparable to ours, so that's the reason why they have a minimum max for that. They didn't want to put an environmental or a traffic planner, it wouldn't be comparable.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the council? Okay. Well, bring to a vote. All those in favor of going forward?
Is that what Dave needs? You need a vote?
Oh, wait, actually, you just need a...
Either a vote or concurrent, either one.
All right, so, John?
I'm okay with it.
Joe? Opposed. Tom?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, I'm in favor of it, so, 3-1. All right, moving on.
Thank you very much.
Back to ordinance 2011-07, relative to an amendment to Title I, Chapter... Let me see if I can remember my Roman numerals. 26, prohibited activities on town property.
I got it.
All right.
Whereas the Conservation Commission has expressed safety concerns regarding target and skeet shooting in the Musquash, and whereas the town council requesting an ordinance is prepared to address this concern without impacting the right to hunt on town property, now therefore let it be ordained by the town council of the Town of London Derry that the municipal code of Town of London Derry, Title I, General Code, Chapter 26, is hereby amended to prohibit target and skeet shooting on town property. That's our first reading.
All right. We have a motion, have a second?
I didn't, are we motioning?
Just to give it to go to a public hearing?
We have a second reading on September 12.
It's a motion to move to a public hearing as a term of...
How about a motion for discussion? Because I'm kind of...
Motion for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it.
There is some attachments here defining the prohibited activities on town properties, and there is a red section B, which is the change in here, target or skeet shooting meaning discharging a firearm on a stationary or moving target. Hunting of game on town property shall be allowed in accordance with all rules, regulations, and statutes promulgated by the state legislator or the state of New Hampshire Fish and Game Department. And that is the only change I see.
Okay, so the only thing that I have to, when they came in to talk about it, when Deb came in and we were talking about it, and I think Ben LeBric was with us too, we had, my concern is that that was really the first time I've heard something like that happening. And I think that we have enough rules and regulations in place to govern things, and in a case like that, if you see something going on like that and you have a question, that's, you call the police, to me. And I'm not so sure that we should be doing this, you know what I mean? Are we just adding another step to overcome another rule?
Well, if I can offer a suggestion to move to the public hearing and come back at the hearing to answer essentially two questions, is that if the police department does receive that call, what kind of enforcement authority, because they always rely upon statutes of local ordinances? The second issue is, I posed a question to our public liability insurance care, which have not received responses of yet, is that if we are aware of those activities on town property, and by not regulating those, we essentially allow them to happen, are we incurring an additional liability upon the town? I don't have an answer to that question, but I will have a...
It's a fair question, yeah. We didn't talk about it that night, so that's a fair question.
But I think to your point, Mr. Chairman, I think you said that, you know, if we have the laws and regulations, well, we don't have the ordinance, I think that's the reason why we're doing it.
Yeah, I know.
We want to make sure we have, when the police arrive there, they don't, they're not going to necessarily have the ability to enforce anything because we don't have a rule that says they shouldn't do it.
Well, the only concern I had was I was looking at it, and really the only addition to this is target or skeet shooting meaning discharge of a firearm at a stationary or moving target, so that's all. I'm just wondering if it's overdue, but anyway, that's fine, so...
Well, if you look at the ordinance really closely, as long as you're not smoking within 20 feet of the building and shooting somebody, you're good.
All right, so...
So, all right, so motion to public hearing?
Yep.
Need a second?
So I need a second. Second, okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, chairman holds affirmative for a zero to move it forward, so we can have a public hearing and have people's input on there, so, okay. That's that. So that goes to the public hearing on 9/12. Okay, this is going to be a Dave, right? Ordinance 2011-08, relative to revisions to the municipal code, Title I, Chapter 24, Title II, Chapters 1 through X, and Title IV, Chapter 3. Do we do a motion to adopt?
There are multiple pages behind this.
Yeah. I've gone through them, and they were basically housecleaning into old info.
Again, this is required for public hearings, September 12.
Okay.
There's only one, there's only one chapter remaining in the first title, is cable television. We've really condensed that. Instead of having explanatory language in the ordinance, we've essentially taken that out and directed the cable directive to promulgate rules and regulations and procedures. Title II, the traffic safety... Title II, the traffic safety code, there are not a lot of changes here, it just clarifies the committee responsibilities, it updates some statutory references, the only significant change, it amends the noise restriction hours from 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m. based upon the police prosecutor's recommendations. And we're jumping ahead on Title IV, we're only looking at one chapter currently in fire prevention, again, that's to affect those changes as a result of the FY12 budget whereby the building department is out inspecting properties and can do some inspections, which previously we had a separate fire inspector come in and deal with, but that needs an ordinance change as well, so all those changes do require a public hearing, we're suggesting you have one for September 12th.
So, a motion and we waive reading based on the town manager's explanation and motion to have a public hearing on 9/12.
Second. Okay, motion and a second to move this to a public hearing, September 12th, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, chair votes affirmative, four zero, see September 12th for that. Okay, ordinance number 2011-09, this is relative to the rezoning of several lots to C2. Can I get somebody to read that?
Still spinning there.
Yeah, me too. So, I hope one of you guys wrote it down. Okay, I thought I had it, guess I don't. Here it is. I'll read it. Ordinance 2011-09. Don't sound so excited. Amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to rezoning map 15 lots 183, 184, and 185 Mammoth Road and map 13, comma, 96B Rocky M. Road to C2. Whereas the planning board has received separate requests to rezone the above referenced parcels to C2 and whereas the planning board has recommended that the town council act favorably upon these requests and whereas the requested zoning would further expand the town's non-residential tax base and is consistent with existing land use patents and surrounding zoning, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Londonderry that the zone, the town zoning ordinance be amended to reflect the rezoning of map 15 lots 183, 184, and 185 Mammoth Road from C1 to C2 and map 13 lot 96B from AR1 to C2 to become effective upon passage by the town council. So moved for a second reading and public hearing on September 12th, 2011.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion? We're going to discuss that on September 12th?
We could start talking about tonight too, just, you know, there's anything that we need to know about.
Council gets recommendation from you guys on this to move it forward, so you don't see any issue with it.
Recommendation from the planning board, that's correct.
All right, okay, motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, chair votes affirmative, four zero. Let's bring that to the 12th September meeting. Okay.
Resolution 2011-12.
Okay, you got that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Resolution 2011-12, relative to the establishment of a Public Safety Dispatch Service Study Committee. This is the first reading tonight on August 15th, 2011. Whereas the Londonderry Town Council has reviewed various options regarding public safety dispatch services in Londonderry in accordance with Section 4.9b of the Town Charter and whereas the council remains interested in ensuring that municipal services are delivered in the most efficient manner possible without compromising public safety and whereas the council believes that input from a committee formed to further study this issue will assist with the decision-making process, now therefore be it resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that the Public Safety Dispatch Services Study Committee shall undertake the responsibilities as set forth in the committee charge, a copy of which is here by attached.
Okay, we have a motion, somebody second?
Second.
Let's, we're going to have a discussion, right?
Yep, absolutely, motion and a second, discussion. Joe, you want to start it off?
Just looking at the representatives, I just want to make sure that we have a very clear understanding of who we're assigning, just for the public, we have a fire chief or designee, public chief, police chief or designee, town councillor appointed by the town council, a budget committee member appointed by the budget committee, and three members of public appointed by the town council, so that's one, two, seven altogether.
I'd like to suggest a change.
Go for it.
I'd like to suggest changing a budget committee member to a school board member, only because there's 5,000 people across the street and I think being the other form of government and them being our customer, it might be prudent.
I just, I'd just like to have it more of a, no, I like the, I like the amount of people that we have here and I think adding another union member to it would be kind of swerve things in the wrong direction, I just like to have an equal side to equal side in that aspect.
I think we're, a school, a school board member.
I'm talking about take budget committee member out and put a school board member.
School board member, okay, okay, I get you.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, we got all town people and they're our customer, that's all I'm saying.
Now, the other thing too, Dave, just out of curiosity, was why seven, not nine? We've had other task forces, we've done nine.
Nothing magic about the number seven, except that it's an odd number.
Just a number you came up with.
I think if we're going to add that, I'd like to add another member of the public, if that's okay.
So, you want to keep the budget committee member?
You want to keep the budget committee member?
I think it's important to keep the budget committee member.
And a member of the public?
They're going to watch for the budget.
Sorry with me.
All right, so I think we have a consensus to add that, so that's fine. So, Margot, you want to add, number nine is going to be the number and a school board appointee and one more?
And four members of the public.
Yeah, four members of the public.
If we can get four members.
I was just thinking that, that's kind of sad.
Well, you know, I mean...
I think we'll be able to accomplish that very easily.
Based on the signatures.
Absolutely, I'm sure we will. Okay, so do we have any other discussions?
There is a date, but there...
Yeah, there's a couple of goals, one is to have interested citizens express their preferences by September 12th, so you can make those selections at that night, we're also looking at the final report hopefully by December 29th, so if there's any budgetary implications.
It doesn't sound like it's enough time.
It may not be, but my goal is, is that if there's any budgetary implications which are embraced by the council, gives you an opportunity to include it in our FY13 budget because you've got a, you've got a shorter window this year because of our new form of government. You know, instead of, instead of finalizing the budget essentially February 3rd or 10th, you're presenting your budget February 4th, hopefully at the deliberative session, so it's going to be wrapped up a month sooner in January.
Okay.
Dave, that's true.
I have a question, Jim? Maybe this is to Dave, as far as number six, I actually think it's very important to have an outside consultant assist, is there a budget that's been set forth or is that something strictly that the committee will actually decide on whether or not they're going to have a consultant assist them in it?
They will, the vision is that if they need to engage a consultant, they will present a consultant with budgetary costs and I'm going to identify where the source of money's coming from.
RFP for that would go out from you?
Can we make, can we make a change to that? I would like to take away if necessary and just change it to, that should be part of this process.
Right.
Don't you think?
I'd like to have an outside source that has more of a...
There's a value, there's an inherent value to that.
Well, history, they have history in doing something like this.
That too, and Dave and I had discussed this earlier.
Personally, I think, I think they ought to engage the use of a consultant, but there's really two ways to look at this, you either have, you either hire a consultant to do it under the direction of the town council or give the committee that you appoint the flexibility to conduct a study in which they feel is appropriate.
And then consult as necessary.
Well, you gotta, you need to, if you're, if you choose to have a task force, you have to empower them, so you let them elect a chairman and you give them options. If, you know, the consultants for this kind of thing, I mean, Dave's going to know some from his 911, you know, stuff, but the consultants could, very feasibly could come from out of state, I mean, because this is, you know, it's a pretty broad area.
I, again, I agree with John and it's that responsibility, it'd be left to decision to the, to the committee, but if I were sitting on the committee, I would want to bring in a consultant at some point to test my assumptions and to maybe present different options or ideas that we haven't thought of.
Well, that's why I presented the question that way, is that, is it going to be something that we are going to just subject them to or is there a budgetary number that we're looking to have them come under? I mean, are we authorizing this now or are you saying that they would come and ask for it and then we'd authorize a budget later?
Well, what I'm suggesting is they would come to me and say, we need X number of thousand dollars and I have to make sure I identify the locational funds before I approve.
Okay.
Good luck.
You'll let us know, you'll let us know obviously if that comes to that, right?
Absolutely, all right. Okay, so, what do you guys think? Good with it? We changed the language for the committee charge?
So, the people, for the people that are listening at home, the purpose is that, do you mind if I read that out?
Go ahead.
Okay, the purpose and mission of the Public Safety Dispatch Service Study Committee shall be to review and compare different public safety dispatch models and make recommendations to the town council whether to continue the current separate police and fire dispatch service or recommend a new model. So, it's really looking at all aspects of it from not only a safety point of view, but from a budgetary standpoint as well.
If you want to just touch base on number five, Joe, it'll kind of outline what they're looking at.
Sure, so the study costs efficiencies and public safety impacts of current dispatch structures with various models including combined dispatch service under the direction of the police department, combined dispatch service under the direction of the fire department, regional fire dispatch service under the direction of the fire department, regional police dispatch service under the direction of the police department, E, partnering with other public safety agencies to provide fire dispatch service, and F, partnering with other public safety agencies to provide police dispatch service. So, it really runs again...
We kind of already did that, Dave, didn't we? E and F?
But what we're trying to do is we want to include that because we want to, you know, either ratify the previous information or say it was junk, you know, I mean, really have, like John said, empower this group to really look at all aspects of it, including, you know, as you saw, we had quite a bit of people come out against us, but this committee may say in the end that they actually think that's the best idea based on all the study. I think, I think the biggest thing that we learned from this is that the public doesn't want us to run it to anything without this large, without plenty of thought process involved and I think this is showing the community that we are doing that. As much as we want to save money, as much as they've called to duty that charge, there is a safety aspect to it that's very important as well.
Well put. Okay, so I think we've heard it, we've addressed it. All those in favor of resolution 2011-12, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, four zero, chair votes affirmative, you did say aye, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
I didn't say it very loudly.
All right, so four zero on that one, Margot. Pass it down, okay. That goes to her.
I was just going to say, do we have to, does it have to be voted on as amended or, because we changed the...
Oh, yeah, we changed the verbiage, do we need to amend that?
Did you change it on the page?
Yeah, we wrote it on it.
Well, I think, I think the records can reflect the changes that are made, so.
All right, that's fine. All right, let's just do it as to make sure we did it right, so.
Just if your charge then changed.
Yep. Oh, okay.
That's true, that's correct.
Yeah, so you've changed it, it's in the record.
I just changed the charge.
Yeah, okay, that's it, perfect, okay.
Resolution's the same.
Yeah, exactly, okay, great, excellent, thank you. Resolution 2011-13, I have a feeling I know why you're here. Okay, this is relative to the establishment of a dog park study committee.
All right, here we go, whereas the town council has received a request to establish a dog park in Londonderry and whereas the council believes that input from a committee would assist in determining the feasibility to establish a dog park, now therefore let it be resolved by the town council that the dog park study committee shall undertake the responsibilities as set forth in the committee charge, a copy which has been attached. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, and we have Dottie here to present what she wants to do, I guess, or...
Yeah, I just want to remind you, I'm Dottie Grover, 537 Mammoth Road, I'm here as a citizen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I wanted to let you know that I've already gotten some positive feedback from various members of the community that think this is a good idea. Meg tells me that there are approximately 4,000 dogs in Londonderry, so I'm sure some of them need a park. The thing that I'm concerned about before you decide to vote on this is two things, I'm not sure we need to limit it just to five residents, I've already had four people ask if they could get on and I told them they would have to go through this process. And the other thing that really concerns me is that we're asking to submit a final report with recommendation by December 29th and I'm wondering if, I was listening to the previous discussion, if you were thinking about the budget process at all? Okay, I don't believe that we can do an adequate job in that amount of time. There, I've spoken to other people who've put these together, some of them take as long as two or three years, I don't think we need that long, but I would rather, if we're looking at a budget cycle, I would prefer that we look at the next budget cycle after this and make that a deadline.
I'm fine with it.
That's fine, we might try to just provide the window for an opportunity to look at it this year, but if everybody's comfortable looking at it next year, then...
And we can certainly give you interim reports along the way, I have no problem with that. My, I'll tell you right now that my intention is to do everything we can to find funding from other sources than taxes, that's always my first goal.
Okay, so, so as far as the committee, do you want seven, is that what you think?
I think that would be good, yes.
I'd recommend that we remove the town councillor and put in a planning board member. I think they're better equipped to understand planning.
I would agree with that.
Do you think it would be okay to make a requirement that they must like dogs?
No, that's prejudicial.
I think there's a movie about that, must have dogs.
Oh, darn.
You can show that at the first meeting.
In Cats from Tom, because he's got one that's as big as a dog.
Oh, we want cats, my cat is bigger than my dog.
Okay, so we're going to change that to seven members.
Seven members of the public, right, so seven, eight, nine altogether?
Actually, that is seven.
That's seven.
It is seven, it's five members of the public, budget committee and the planning, so it's seven total.
Yeah, it was five, I was looking at more members from the public.
It's seven total, correct, and to John, instead of a councillor, John suggested a planning board member.
Hang on, but you're looking for...
I was looking at seven public members.
Seven.
Oh, seven public members.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you want nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I've got no problem with it.
Okay.
We change the recommendation date to December 28th, 2012. That's a Friday.
We'll be done before that.
I don't want to know.
But that's a good drop dead date.
Okay, yeah, yeah, he added it one day at a time, okay. All right, any other questions for Dottie?
Yeah, actually I have a question, are you okay with duties one through eight?
Yes.
He said duties.
Absolutely. Not a good word, yeah.
No pun intended.
Not a good word.
Sorry.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I already, I don't know if Dave reads minds, but that's, there's a list that I've already made and that pretty much covers the list.
I already have cameras.
That's kind of ironic, anyway, okay, so that all, we've covered that, so, all those in favor of forming a dog park study committee as amended, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizen Grover appreciates it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we table resolution 2011-14 until after we have some time to take a look at the open space report and councillor Dolan can also weigh in.
I have no problem with that, rest of the council okay with it?
Just that Dave, under the new rules for the council of tabling it, doesn't that mean it's dead? Can we just continue it?
Want to continue it?
Suppose you continue it.
Fine, continue it, use my councillor's privilege to the next meeting, whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, so, we're just, Dave, can you just put that off until, we're going to continue it until the 9/15 meeting?
9/12.
9/12.
9/12.
Sorry. And we do have two meetings in September, right, the 12th and...
9/12, 9/19.
Okay, all right, so that's on the side, okay, so...
I'll second it.
Joe, and then the council all said okay, so it's four zero, move it to the 12th, thank you. Okay, order 2011-15 relative to the expenditure of maintenance trust funds for a variety of projects.
And whereas the voters since 2003 have approved funding for the maintenance and repair of public buildings and grounds in the town and whereas the expenditures have been made for various projects on the attached list, now therefore let it be ordered by the town
Now, therefore, let it be ordered by the town council, the town of Lundondary, that the town treasurer is hereby ordered to expend $112,808.8 for the aforementioned repairs and improvements, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Dave, do you want to just give us the 911 on that?
Just the majority of the expenses, we're repairing the library roof, which is about, are about $41,000. Also, closing out the North Forest, old North Forest Station site to repave the area upon which these stations used to be located, about 11:06, and also, as part of our continuing efforts to improve the highway garage facility, there was some site work and driveway reconstruction work for $44,000. The rest of the expenses are predominantly dealing with HVAC systems throughout our town campus.
Excellent. How's the roof coming along on the library? We all set with that?
Done.
Done? Excellent. Under budget?
On budget.
Nice. Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 2011-15, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative for zero, motion is passed. Okay. Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve has presented in our packet.
Second. Motion and a second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Minutes of council public meeting, 7/11, are approved. Okay, liaison reports, we'll start with John.
Did I have any meetings? I don't think I had anything. At least anything, nothing I remember. Boy, that was memorable.
Made an impression. Okay. John doesn't have any, Tom?
From the planning board, nothing definite, but I think they're anticipating some sort of Woodmont application in September, October.
Excellent. Joseph?
Hi, I've learned.
Nothing? Okay.
I was away for the Heritage Commission one at the end of the month. I was up in the month. So, I have nothing else. So, Dave, town manager report?
Yeah, several things. Looking for council concurrence to establish the date for delivery session of February 4th, which is a Saturday. We can establish the date between February 4th and February 11th, and the school delivery session is set for February 10th, which is a Friday evening. So, recommending February 4th, so we can just complete our calendar for the FY13 budget process.
You said that's a Saturday?
That's a Saturday, that's correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the whole purpose of it was to get away from Saturdays and move to a nighttime meeting that was more convenient for people. I mean, I thought that was the purpose of what was put forth by those that wanted to go in that direction.
Kind of what I thought, too.
So, what's the third, did you say?
The third would be a Friday evening, but that's outside of the window. The window is from February 4th, from Saturday the 4th to Saturday the 11th.
So, 10th, right?
Inclusive, so anytime during that time.
So, it can be Monday the 6th.
So, if you want to look at, if you want to look at an evening meeting, then I'll confer with the school and see when the room is available.
Sounds like Friday the 10th, there's a 10th, right?
But you said the schools.
The schools on 10th.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Schools on 10th.
I mean, I don't, you know, you guys are more involved in details of that than I was. That's just something I remember about it. I'm okay with the third.
The state isn't.
Or, I mean, whatever the Saturday is.
So, really, you have the 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, if you're looking at doing an evening. If you're looking at doing a Saturday, it suggests do it the 4th, not the 10th, because of the 11th, because folks have already attended the delivery session for the school on Friday night.
Meeting hangover.
Yeah, I remember everybody's big argument was, is that, hey, you know, I can't be here on a Saturday, my kids have got this, blah, 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 blah. I don't know how relative all that was, I just remember there was a lot of chatter about it.
No, that was, that was part of the discussion. That was absolutely part of the discussion. At least, that's how I remember it. So, can we check on the... That's not going to work, you just said the schools.
So, it's going to be, it'll be a Thursday night or another night.
Well, hang on, can't we have it at the gym? Can't we have it at a different spot, maybe? Ask them?
The same night, but then people could...
No, wouldn't be the same night, yeah, you can't do it on the same night, yeah.
It's a little tricky.
So, you said you could check on Monday night, the 6th, right?
Sure.
Okay, so, there's usually games on Tuesdays and Fridays. The only room capable of cable is the cafeteria. Otherwise, we got to pay to have the cable brought in.
So, do you want to shoot from Monday the 6th, then?
Sure for that?
Yeah.
The guards?
Yep, I'm good with it.
All right with me. I have no idea where I'll be on Monday, Friday, the 6th. I could be anywhere.
What about the band room? You could pass cable. Then we have, we have a joint media like that. You can have cable in the band room.
It's pretty small. Yeah, it's very small, compared to the cafeteria. Okay. All right, so we got February 6th, so that's done. Hopefully, that works. Okay, board committee appointments and reappointments. Dave?
Just to get back to the rest of my report real quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry. You may have noticed, but reconstruction of South Row was completed on Friday.
If you remember, there used to be a dip there with small culverts. Well, as part of the 93 whiting project, they had to expand the wetlands. So, they actually, as part of the contract, the analysts negotiated larger culverts, and they elevated the road.
Yeah.
So, it should eliminate some freezing issues in the winter and some flooding issues in the spring. Mosquito spraying, there's been some positive testing in Manchester with mosquito spraying, which started actually Saturday evening, Sunday evening, at the town common. Will continue through all of our public sites tomorrow night, and then be at the high school and the middle school again on Wednesday and Thursday. So, we should have a good application of that. I received notification from the library trustees that trustee Karen Goodman has resigned and relocated outside of the community. The council has appointed replacements, so the trustees are completing their due diligence. We're making recommendations of the council in the next couple of meetings. And the last thing is that the Lundondary receives its health products, health insurance for employees from local government center. There's been a lot of publicity recently about a secretary of state report on their pool risk management programs. Folks who, they believe that LGC's reserves are too high, questions of business practices. I've been sitting on that board for the last eight years, and I just let the council know that, number one, there are adequate reserves to continue for, to provide health insurance to our employees. That's not an issue at all. Any action taken by the board has been vetted through legal counsel on the advice of actuaries and risk management consultants. One of the, one of the issues with secretary of state is he believes that our, we maintain reserves which are too high, and should be returned some of that to municipalities and towns and school districts, along with the cities who are members through LGC. We use a process called, it's called risk-based capital. It's an, it's a measurement used by the insurance company. And our RBC is 4.2. One of the recommendations of the report from the secretary of state would essentially go to an RBC of 2.0, an equivalent of that, which, when in states which regulate pool risk programs, if you had an RBC of 2.0, that would put you on the, on the watch list for potential insolvency. So, we're a little confused about what the recommendations are coming down on. The process is that the, the report will go through administrative hearing with secretary of state's office, and then we'll go to the Supreme Court if the, if the parties can't reach agreement on what the appropriate level of risk is. Looking through, looking through a taxpayer lens, an insurance lens, or a business lens, a vast majority of people would be comfortable with LGC's operations. I think there's a little more at play here, but I just wanted to let you know that they do provide health insurance for us. Up until July 1st, LGC provided property liability and workers' comp coverage as well. I bid those out in the spring, and I moved them to Primex because we got a much better price. And I'd say the taxpayers, I think about $70,000 once all the credits are calculated. I know the school does secure a majority of its health coverage from school care, a third pool risk program in New Hampshire, but they do also receive some of the health programs from LGC. So, I'll give you an update as to the status of that issue. I suspect that it's not going to be resolved for another year or two, given the hearings process with the secretary of state's office and probably the Supreme Court. But, but at least in the interim, is that our, our health programs are adequately funded, and there's no question whether LGC will be in a position to pay claims. They're, they're funding it. You know, the program has been so successful, it's like the second or third largest pool risk management program in the country. And as such, the trustees, the directors have retained the best consultants available, because we're dealing with about $350 million taxpayer money. And right now, reserves are about 20% of that for, for claims. So, I just want to make sure that the council knew that our employees are adequately covered and will continue to be adequately covered throughout this review process.
Now, do you foresee us, as we go forward with budgets and the way medical is, you know, being priced in the open market these days, that we'll probably be bidding out every year to see if we can get better opportunities?
Well, I don't know if we're bidding out every year. We bid, we did bid our insure, health insurance this past year as well.
Yeah.
And we had two bidders, Primex and LGC. School care chose not to bid on it, and neither did any of the private insurance carriers available, which provide this service. LGC was the most economically priced. And the other bidder, Primex, is actually, will be discontinuing its health coverage as of June 30th of 2012.
Competitive enough?
Well, it's not a question of competitive, it's that they want to... What, what they told me was that they don't feel comfortable because health rates are so unpredictable. And they want to provide stability, which all the, all the insurance providers attempt to provide, but health insurance is so volatile, they didn't feel comfortable being in that position any longer. So, they decided to step away.
So, a quick question. Why, why can't we get a private company to take a look at it? Why wouldn't they want to? It's just too much money?
Well, we, we actually, we opened up our bids to everyone. We put an ad in the Manchester Union Leader, and we sent it to the three pools, and we invited anybody to bid, but the private companies didn't, didn't bid for us. If you're in, if you're in a pool arrangement, number one, the profit motive is not there. You've got an economies of scale, they've got a lot of risk management programs which hold down our utilization. And so, you know, what I've been told is with private insurers, those, those risk programs are not there, those wellness programs are not there. So, one of the problems is, is that you end up having more utilization. You talk about $350 million, you know, pretty close, I'm going to get this number wrong, between 80 and 90% of that is for utilization. It's all utilization. You know, for an example, why we have the risk reserves we do is that it's settled down after a while, but when President Obama first relaxed his healthcare program, there's a lot of uncertainty. So, our utilization went through the roof, because folks didn't know how it would impact their health coverage. And once more became known about the program, then utilization went back down to zero. But, you know, when we set the rates for the program 18 months before that, we never knew the potential of that particular, that particular action coming upon us. So, you know, it's all based upon utilization and what services are being required from our members.
Yeah, I think to get a private insurer engaged, we would have to combine with the school, show a large enough volume in order for them to probably engage, would be my, would be my guess.
I mean, we're in a pool now with, with thousands of members, and it's, it's, to give you an example, if you have 1,000 employees under the LGC model they use, you're totally self-rated. So, you're on your own risk and everything else. You share in economies of scale through the wellness program, things of that nature, but your experience is rated by itself. If you're, if you're under 100 employees, then you're into a pool of all other communities, other private employees, and they all share the rest together. And so, we're at about 175 employees. You probably have about 160 with secure health coverage through the town. And so, we're somewhere on that scale, where a certain percentage of our experience remains with us, the rest is spread around the pool, which is, you know, if you have a couple of large claims, you really need that, you really need that, that wide base to spread those costs out.
Does it'll pretty much get chlorinated?
I tell you, you know, if you're, well, you know, there's a lot of private businesses that are now collaborating, a law firm's doing the collaborating to insurance pools. If, if, you know, if you insure, if you insure 20 lives, and you have a significant, you know, a valve replacement, as an example, you know, that'll really skew your utilization, and it's really going to whack your rates for that particular company, so... And, and one thing, the whole debate about national healthcare, whether you are for the plan they adopted or against, the portion of it, both sides were saying the key is, is to get a large base and economies of scale. And the LGC program has been in existence since, well, now for 27 years, since 1984.
So, this year going forward, the only plan to bid for a health insurance for the town is LGC?
Unless we can, unless we can, unless we can entice either school care, and school care is just what it is, it, I think it does ensure some municipalities, but strictly mostly on the school side, or to entice private insurers to get involved with the process. We had, we had a private insurer get involved with dental bids, and they provided three different, three different levels of benefits. But again, the more economical one was to go to LGC. But as far as the health side, we didn't receive any private. Now, when, when Primex gets away from the health business, they had a partnership with Harvard Pilgrim. So, I don't know if Harvard Pilgrim's going to start to aggressively seek out municipal business, I just don't know. And so, if, if that occurs, what we've got to look at is how they're going to, how they're going to measure our, our costs. Are we going to be alone, or are we going to be in a larger?
That's my, as you're getting through this, and I'm understanding it a little bit more, that's the thing that worries me, is that LGC's going to be the only one, because you're not getting any other feedback from any of the companies. So, how the heck do you know if you're getting the best price?
Well, you're getting the best-
Because I guess what I'm saying is, is you only have one. So, how do you know it's the best?
Well, here's, from my perspective, is that, is that although LGC hires employees and actuaries and consultants, the policies are driven by 31 local officials, of which I'm on the board, so is Peter Curro. So, you know, and during this entire debate, which really just, it just baffles me, is that I don't know why I or any of the fellow board members would make decisions unconquered, which do we come back to Lundondary and make our jobs here even more difficult? So, you know, trust me, doing the budget problems we've had here in Lundondary, if I had an opportunity to turn back thousands of dollars to Lundondary, I'd do it in a heartbeat. So, what we're balancing is to maintain our reserves in the least amount possible, so I'm not looking, I mean, any year, you can give money back to any community we like. However, a year from then, you'd be looking at an increase of 20 or 30% on your health rates. So, the balance is, is to provide stability over the long term and make sure that every, every available dollar is plowed back into a formula to reduce or stabilize rates.
Yeah, unfortunately, last year, I was able to share some rates of my own with Dave, so we knew those going in. We had, at least we had something worth for.
Dave? And I asked you this, this week. One of the statements in the newspapers attributed, quote attributed to Peter Curro was, he said he wears two hats in this. So, I think, just so people are aware, I asked, are you as direct as compensated by the LGC?
No.
Okay.